Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now 6:33 and we are going to get started this regular meeting of the Board of Education Westminster Public Schools who is officially off the clock. All right Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chantow.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Present.
Mr. Valente.
Present.
Fantastic, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by Mr. Dino Valente.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic, moving on to item number two, Agenda Approval.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the proposed agenda for the regular meeting dated August 28, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantow.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valente.
Aye.
All right fantastic, moving on to our outstanding minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the regular board meeting minutes dated August 14, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second for those 2018 minutes. Veronica, any comments? No comments? Yes.
Our minutes are outstanding because we have a fantastic secretary assistant. Give her a hand.
Fantastic, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantow. Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valente.
Aye.
I don't think we've ever had to call order on the board, but...
Well, he started it.
All right, moving on, we have one more set of outstanding minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the executive and study session meeting minutes dated August 14, 2018.
Second. We've got a motion, a second. Any comments? Questions? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantow.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valente.
Aye.
All right, moving on to Dr. Pamela Swanson's superintendent report.
Well, good evening Board. You were with us last week certainly when we celebrated that terrific news with our staff that Westminster Public Schools has moved to the improvement category and is now in good standing as far as the state accountability clock is concerned. And I once again want to say how very proud I am of our entire staff and all our students for the incredible lift. It was quite a moment and in a second I'm going to show you a video highlight of that rally. But first I want to share with you some of the reaction I've been receiving. Colleagues just from across the whole metro area and the state and out of state have been sending good wishes to the school district, congratulatory remarks. We had a lot of people in our corner. And in fact, today from the National Conference of State Legislators, Dino, I copied you on that, sunny day, sent us a congratulatory remark as well. And you may recall, Dino and I were invited to speak about competency-based education last month in Los Angeles. And so while the accolades and the praise are nice, I've already been sharing with staff, this is no time to let up. We're going to have to go back to back and make it happen. With our improved ratings, we will be measured against a new cohort of students. The bar, so to speak, has been raised and what I mean by that is, as I told Claudette, and I see Claudette up there, it's not easy being green, right? Especially when you've moved from priority improvement, skipped over improvement, get into green. Amber will tell you because they've had to work very hard to remain in that category, your kids are now going to be compared to like peers in that same group next year. So whatever lift we had this year, guess what? We not only have to do it again, but we have to do it bigger in order to stay there. But I feel like the wind is behind us, we've gained momentum. And with that, I'd like to show you the last week's event. Hello Westminster family, let's hear it. Well, families celebrate highs and families come together and we cry when there are lows. And I'm here to tell you today that as a part of Westminster's family, we are here today to celebrate because all of you, each and every one of you, regardless of your job, contributed and we are off the clock. Some said it couldn't be done statistically. Some said that we would just have this up and down thing from here to eternity. And we knew better and a little over a year ago, we issued a performance challenge. And the challenge was for everybody to take a step forward because if all of us lifted up at the same time, not only would we be off the incredible and inequitable and terrible state accountability systems clock, but our kids would win too. So my point is it took all of us and if you've been here for a few years, some of you might remember when our district performance framework looked a little bit like this. Red is bad, green is good. That was a few years ago. Today, we got the official word, here's what we look like today. And let's let the world know that it's about time that WPS gets the respect it deserves. So I thought you'd have fun seeing that from a different vantage point. I don't know what our preschool teachers drink or eat in the morning, but Leona Loss, she's just up there going for it. If you saw her picture, in every picture she was like that. So what energy. And the timing of this news coincides with our competency-based education summit that we are hosting at the end of the month. And I also want you to know that educators from across the country, as well as internationally, are planning to attend and we'll keep you posted on that. And I'm hoping that some, if not all of you, can participate with us on that. I want you to know that your belief in our competency-based system and your belief in our folks in the team board is a tribute to you as well. You've never wavered in support of innovation and in a belief for local control and our right to determine what's best for our children. So I want to publicly thank you for that. Otherwise, happy to report that two weeks into the school year, everything appears to be moving ahead as planned. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board, any comments, questions for Dr. Swanson? No comments or questions? Let's move on to the Board of Education discussion slash report. Would anyone like to take the lead with commentary this evening? We are silenced from celebration of last week, nothing to report. The only thing I would like to acknowledge is I had the opportunity, of course, to be with PTO at WAIS, which of course I'm a parent there, so I kind of have to be there. I say have to, I'm an engaged parent, I want to be there, let's put it that way. But it was good to actually see the library completely filled with parents. And that was the first time and I don't think any of us hurt each other because everyone was kind of talking over one another because it was the first and with new people. So that was somewhat exciting, but I think we'll have to move into the gym moving forward. But I also had the opportunity to be at Metz today where I got to listen to a presentation for parents to listen about how to interpret their children's test scores, which I actually thought was a good practice. And for other principals in the room, that might be a good idea because, you know, not all, every parent speaks and lives "AccuSpeak." So, or what do you refer to it as?
"Edgespeak."
"Edgespeak." So within that, I just think it was a good reference for parents to kind of understand and how their children perform. So thanks for that opportunity. With that, no other comments?
All right, I just wanted to add, today I was in a meeting or at the governor's office and several of the Colorado Department of Education people came over to me, came to me and told me congratulations and I told them, "Don't congratulate me, congratulate our teachers and our staff." I mean, we're here to help you guys, but it's all you guys, so just remember that.
All right. Well, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, we know that. Moving on to audience comments, we do have Ms. Rosie Armijo coming down to speak in regards to Red for Ed.
I got short legs, so it takes longer.
No worries.
So President, Directors and Dr. Superintendent, I'm here to speak on behalf of all educators in the state of Colorado today. Today, we had a meeting and it was decided, starting tomorrow through May, will be Red for Ed Day every Wednesday. So we're asking anyone that is involved in education, because everyone worries about the funding for our students, our schools, everything, wear red. If you can't wear something red, we have buttons you could wear. I was already told by transportation that they couldn't wear red, so I'm going to get them the buttons so that they can wear the buttons on Wednesday so they can show that they're supporting red on Ed. And this isn't just in Colorado, this is going to be nationwide. We already heard from Arizona, California, Washington DC, West Virginia, Tennessee, they're all going to be wearing red on Wednesdays. So this is a nationwide push for more money in education. And I hope that you will let our, anyone that is involved in education, wear that red. And if any of you want a pin, we do have pins that we're making in our office. So you're welcome to wear the pins. Thank you.
Thank you Rosie.
Thank you Rosie.
Excellent. All right, moving on to the educational report, state assessment results with Dr. Oliver Grinham and Ms. Jenny Gatto.
Saying almost Dr. Gatto.
It's a great evening in Westminster Public Schools. Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson. Last school year, as you already heard, Dr. Swanson issued the 2018 Performance Challenge to increase achievement results with the outcome of getting the district off the state accountability clock. You'll also recall that last year you approved a management pathway plan with four specific goals and many strategic initiatives. After some lively face-to-face with the state board, they also approved our plan. You will recall that principals paraded in front of you to share their school's individual commitment and the work that they would do to help in this endeavor. You'll also recall that the focus was intense as we monitored our practices and our data throughout the school year. Well, tonight, Ms. Gatto and myself would like to formally share the results of those efforts as evidence in the scores from the high-stakes state tests and also as well share the outcome of the accountability clock and some information about that.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board and Dr. Swanson. I'm just going to step back a little bit to last year and those initial testing days. So in those first day of testing, our principals, teachers across the district really engaged in some very unique practices to really motivate and inspire our kids to do their very best on the assessment. So just a couple of examples here of Hodgkins Elementary worked with parents to have every student have a personal letter from their parents congratulating them and getting them pumped up for the test, telling them to do their best. Metz Elementary, their teachers got involved and each one of them wrote a personal note to kids right when they came in the classroom, they saw a really positive note to start that testing. Over at STEM Academy, they built up their teachers, so not just for kids, this is a very intense set of days for our teachers across the district. So they did some things to keep teachers pumped up throughout that testing window. Another one that's not up there, I happened to be at Shaw Heights the first day of their testing and Principal Carlson showed a video sitting at his desk where he talked to kids and said, "This is your moment to show everybody what you're made of and how much you know and how great you are." So a lot of great practices that I think helped kids really engage in those assessments during a really hard month of testing. So last year, we had our fourth year of state assessments on the new Common Core standards, but it actually was our first year of the Colorado-specific version. We actually no longer administer the PARC assessment, we now administer the Colorado Measures of Academic Success, CMAS we call it. And it is a Colorado-specific version. So the state board was charged with going out and looking for a vendor that, and three of the state board asked for is that it was aligned to our state standards. The assessment was shorter and at the assessment, we got results back in... So they didn't achieve all of those, but we do in fact have a new assessment that our kids took last year. Very PARC-like, but it is, it will change over the coming years and it is a Colorado version of it. So for those assessments, we take assessments in four content areas, English, Language Arts, typically we refer to that as literacy here in Westminster, math, science and social studies. In the English Language Arts, we test third through 11th graders across three different assessments. CMAS is third through eight, PSAT for ninth and 10th graders and SAT for 11th graders. And last year was our first year of the ninth grade PSAT. Math, kind of same breakdown, three through 11. Science is administered in fifth, eighth and 11th grade. And it also, there are subsections of science on both the PSAT and SAT. Social Studies is grade four and seven. 11th grade was supposed to be in place last year, but they kind of put that one on, it was deferred for last year. We haven't heard yet if we'll be administering the social studies assessment this year or not. And for social studies, we test a third of the schools, they do a sampling every year. So every three years, schools would administer that social studies assessment. And this is the third year, so all schools will have taken in fourth and seventh grade that assessment. So our results, the first thing, we're going to look at CMAS achievement status. So here, we're looking at a three-year trend of data. Top chart is CMAS, English Language Arts. The bottom is math. We're looking at 2016, meet or exceed. There are four or five performance levels on the CMAS assessment. Does not meet, partially met, approach, meet and exceed. And this chart's looking at the two categories, meet or exceed, which are the state bar, the expectation for students. And these numbers are definitely not where we hope them to be. TDA counts as 40% of the overall school performance frameworks. We see these low numbers across the state and it's something we continue to work on. But if you look at the final column up there, you see our improvements across the district which exceeded the state improvements in the percent of kids meet or exceed. Some celebration areas, both in math and English Language Arts, our fourth graders and our eighth graders both posted some of the highest improvements, where we did see some drops in seventh grade. But what I would point out for ELA, for instance, up there, our seventh graders did see a decline if we compare seventh graders 2017 to seventh graders 2018. But if you look at that cohort of students, our sixth graders, they were 18% meet or exceed as seventh graders moved up to 25%. So actually, we had a 7% gain in students' meter exceed across that actual student group. So this is an area we definitely still want to work on, but that's our look at improvement this year across the third through eighth grade assessments. So high school, again, first year of our ninth grade PSAT assessment. It's our third year for eighth grade and second year for SAT. So this one is just rolling into the high school. Again, these are scores, we want to see the percentage of kids that are very needed ready for post-secondary education, which is the green color. We did some things last year as a district, our middle schools took on the charge of saying, "We're going to administer the eighth grade PSAT to all eighth graders across the district to provide some better indicators for the high school. How do we improve that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade?" So all of our eighth graders took that assessment in November of last year. And this is the first year that our high school had that data to start right out of the gate. We're working asaps are using Khan Academy to really focus and provide strategic support. So this is where we shine. This is, we know growth has to come before we see those achievement scores go up. And on this, you all saw this as your principals came through and presented to all of you last year. So I think you all know what color we're looking for on these charts.
Blue.
Blue.
Right.
I thought that was rhetorical, sorry.
So we're very excited to see the blue. This is our grade level look. We don't see third grade because you have to have two years of assessments to get your growth score. So we get fourth through eighth grade on this. You're looking at 2016, 2017, 2018 for English Language Arts. Then you see the state numbers, which 50 is the state number across the board. In all but fourth grade, you saw achievements going there for fourth grade. That was just a bit under that 50 mark. Fifth grade and eighth grade, we're posting in seventh grade, all of them actually, we're seeing some really nice growth scores there, which is what we think contributes a lot to our new performance category, improvement category on the district performance framework. Math, we're seeing a lot more of the light orange and the blue in the grade, which is where we want to move. And definitely seeing it at elementary, that's going to support our middle schools as those kids transition up. So some great results in growth. The other piece, Commissioner Anthons talked about this in the press last week as our growth results came out. She talked about what the state calls gap groups. There are four of those gap groups that we're held accountable to on our district performance framework, which are English learners, free introduced lunch, individual education plans, IEPs and our minority students. So we get data on a variety of other gap groups, our gender gaps, our gifted students. But these are the four that we are held accountable to on that grade line. And she said this is an issue across the state and I think we would be one of those exceptions. So again, in math, you're seeing bar exceed that 50th growth percentile showing a year's growth in nearly all of those areas. IEP is the one we didn't hit. But if you look across to the second set of data there, the state data, the state overall did not hit the 50th and we exceeded the state by 4%. So still, even though that's not at the 50, we are exceeding the state assess as there is being hit. Math, again, here in our gap groups, we're almost gray and blue across the board. So again, our gaps here in Westminster are closing, those gaps getting to the top.
And yesterday, the state publicly released the 2018 preliminary district and school performance frameworks. And I'm ecstatic to say that we did indeed accomplish Dr. Swanson's performance challenge and Westminster Public Schools is no longer on the clock. And that is, that's new for us. That's great. You can see on this slide, the district score at the bottom row of the screen for the past three years and we've been incrementally moving up. You can also see the pattern of color across this particular slide. Back in 2016, we had one school that was in red, we had three schools that were in green. So the green and yellow have been dominating that slide. That really is a testament to our CBS system. Of the 18 schools that are up there, we've got one blue school, we've got eight green, eight yellow and one in the orange category. Westminster High School is the only school in that orange category, which is called the priority improvement category. The school missed the cutoff by 1.2 points. And as Principal Kiwa told her staff, she feels that they lost the game in overtime. But this will not be the case this time next year. As you can see, the eight yellow schools, we call them the improvement category and the green ones are in the performance category. Colorado STEM Academy is in the blue distinguished category. And we made the decision last spring that should a school get above 74 points on the scale, we would consider that to be a distinguished school. The state does use that cutoff for districts. Districts that score above the 74 percentage points are considered distinguished. And I think since we accredited our schools, we can absolutely apply that to our schools. So this is the first year that we have that recognition in place and I'm sure we will see more blue show up on that performance framework. What's interesting about STEM, because I had to go and see in my competitive side, what is it like when it's compared to like schools? And the next slide shows you some of that. We see the STEM Academy outperforms its peers, so its distinguished status is well-earned. And I'm sure Principal Martin, who's in the audience tonight, will go in more detail about that during her upcoming presentation, which she will have on September 11. Of course, Jenny and I could not resist sharing a little clock humor. Isn't it nice that we don't hear any ticking?
Questions and comments? Board, any questions or comments? And Jenny, if you are speaking, please speak into the mic. That was what we were just told by the sound crew. So you're going to have to do your portion all over again.
In the silence.
In silence, we won't be in here, but thank you. Questions?
One quick question. On a report we saw earlier in the fall, earlier a week or two ago, under the minority breakdown of scores or breakdown of scores per minority group, do we have that? I don't remember where that ended up.
So there's the, on the screen there, you see the bottom is the minority.
Right. Do we have it further broken down into categories?
Yeah, we do. I can pull that for you.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we saw it once.
Individual schools do their presentations, they'll be highlighting the celebrations that they have in their growth data and in their achievement data as well. But we can certainly remind them to pay attention to that question.
Questions, comments, anything else?
One other thing on that, that's something in the school and district frameworks, the state's actually adding that breakdown for all of the categories for SAT. So it does show the breakdown of our, that specific group, the minority categories.
And if I...
That's actually coming out and there's going to be points associated with each one of those in the future.
If I remember correctly, the numbers were very positive across the board on all of our minority groups.
When we look, as Jenny mentioned, the gap groups is what the state calls them, that pattern, we see increasing improvement over time. And we see that across all our groups. That's something notable because when I look at other districts, I see it in some groups, I don't see it in all groups. And again, that would go back to our CBS system that we have.
Just one comment, and I know we've discussed this briefly, but I'd like to put it into comments for the record, but I do know that the schools are going to be coming back and presenting to the Board, doing their educational reports again, talking about areas of growth where they need to work on to continue this momentum. I think that, you know, my biggest concern is if there's, you know, that we don't keep the momentum and that we have to keep moving forward. And I know we're going to have more conversations in regards to that moving forward, but that's just the two cents I wanted to throw out there.
I have a few questions and comments, actually. Can you tell me what our participation rate was?
It was 90...
Into the microphone, please.
98%. 98.5, I believe.
Okay. Do we know what the state's participation rate was? I assume everybody in Douglas County waved out of the test?
We do have, we have a spreadsheet the state did release by district that shows every district and every school's participation rate. So, and we know from the district frameworks that were released yesterday and school frameworks, there are a number of districts that on their frameworks, it says accredited with, even with distinction, with low participation. So all of that is public and we can, in study session, I could bring some of those up and we can look at some of those districts. So all of that is public information now on CD's website.
Okay.
Actually Veronica, if I can have you bring up this slide where I was talking about the STEM schools. See, the very first one that's above, our Colorado STEM Academy actually has low participation, although they scored the 90 points. That raises lots of questions in my mind about what low participation means there. I'm sure it raises those similar questions in your mind.
It does. It does. My next question, what form of the test did we take?
So the assessment this year was the, it's not PARC, it's Colorado-specific version and it's called CMAS now. It's still made by the same vendor, so Pearson is still the same producer of the assessment. My belief right now is that it was essentially the same assessment with a few items removed to get it below the eight-hour mark that the state set forth for the... to get it below the eight-hour mark that the state set forth for the Board of, for the Colorado Department of Education staff.
So, what did they remove and change?
That's an excellent question. Jenny and I asked that at a state-level meeting. We did not get an answer from that question. They could not tell us what actually changed, other than some items were taken out. We wanted to know how that would impact scoring, they were not able to answer that question for us. It was interesting, because one of my remarks was, "Well, you can make the test shorter, and it seems to have no impact according to you, so why didn't we do that when we first started CSAP and TCAP? Why have we had those long tests for over 15 years if it didn't matter?" I think it does matter, so we're still waiting for that answer.
Yeah, keep waiting. How did our students take the test?
100% on the computer.
And what difference does that make?
So, there is, they're, they're making adjustments to the test, they say, but right now, the, the different item types, if I was plotting a, plotting something on a number line.
Oh, we know you're plotting.
Yes. If I, if I'm doing that on the computer-based, I get the blank line, and it gives you your question, and the kid has to decide where they're going to place that fraction on, on the number line. On the paper-based, you get four options, so same question, but you get an A, B, C, D option of which of those, which a lot of kids, that's going to be an easier question. I can probably narrow that down. We teach kids how to determine which ones you can remove from that list. So, it is a very different assessment. I know they're doing some things where they're going to try and mimic the paper version to match that online, so that it's, you have the same kind of thing where they have to plot it, but they have to make sure the technology's there to support it. So, right now, they are still two very divergent assessments, and so when you see things like low participation, it, there's a very good chance that that makes a difference in the overall scale scores.
And how long have we been taking the electronic version?
Four years.
So, we've been doing things the right way, and we've not been taking the cheater way out?
That is correct.
I just could be no more elated after that absolutely horrific day a year and a half ago before the State Board. Thank you to everybody, to our students, to our parents, to our staff. This was not easy, this was not easy. I personally have no use for the State Board of Education, would like to see them constitutionally dissolved and have a commissioner appointed by the Governor, like all the other department heads, but they were very disrespectful. They pretty much told us we needed 12-step programs, and they called us failures. And when I told Commissioner Durham, I said, "We are not failures." He said, "Well, what would you call yourselves?" I said, "Determined." And he didn't know how to respond, because I think it was, I think he's probably still trying to look up the definition of determined. He's still at the Bs in the dictionary for bully, because that's all he is, and he needs to go away soon. But that being said, we are determined, we were determined, and if we didn't have determination, we would not get where we are today. From where I started in 2011, we saw the beginnings of that determination, and there's a lot of you sitting in this room who have been here with us since then or very close to then, and you have worked very hard for the students and the teachers and the staff, and you all deserve all the accolades that you can get, because in 2011, that bar had one green, and that was not even a school that's with us. In fact, I think nine of our schools have now passed that school's test scores, but that bar was almost all red. And I've watched for seven years, the red just go down, drop, 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 and the green and start to take over. And Dr. Grinnam, you're fond of talking about this being a trend, not a one-point-in-time. I think it's safe to say that when Dr. Swanson said in 2011, "If we turn the ship too fast, it'll capsize." We have to be slow, steady, and methodical, and we have been, and we are now going to win the regatta, and that means that all of our students do too. So, keep it all up. Thank you.
And am I reading this correctly, that we had eight schools outscore Crown Point? Just throwing that out there as a jab.
I believe so. I don't have the slide in front of me, but I-
Sorry, that's what I'm, I'm just reading, and I, I just know how contentious our relationship was when I first started on the Board and-
Their choice, not ours.
Sorry, I felt like that was a moment I had to do that. All righty.
Mr. President, if I, if I may, a couple of observations. We all know that assessment, assessments should be two things, valid and reliable. And just because Westminster Public Schools is off the clock, I intend to remain a sharp critic of the state's accountability system. It's inequitable in so many ways, and when you look at eighth-grade CMAS, and you calculate growth to ninth-grade PSAT, I question how that can be valid and reliable. How do you calculate growth between two different tests, you know? When you look at a set of rules that the state has, it says, "Your district's accreditation will be lowered by one level if you don't meet the threshold of 95% participation rate." And the federal people who have the ESSA rules fight with our state, because some people from their political views want to look at some kids in affluent districts and say, "Well, Dino, you look like you can run pretty fast, so it doesn't matter if you opt out, because you'd probably be pretty good anyway." That is not valid and reliable. There are different rules for different districts. There are different rules for different demographics, and I'm just going to be blunt about it. I think it's a discriminatory system, and so I just want the Board to know, I intend to still be a very sharp critic, and any district who's fighting this like we have fought it, I'll stand right there, shoulder to shoulder with them, because it's not right. It ranks and sorts kids, it ranks and sorts teachers, and it demoralizes educators and school districts. So, just know that.
Thank you, and I think you have a Board who will stand there with you.
I'm confident.
And, and I think, since they're fond of listening to our Board meetings, if the reporter from Chalkbeat is listening, I would encourage her to ask the state those questions that we can't get the answers to, maybe she can as a member of the press. So, Ms. Robles, what did the state take out of the test? I hope you can find out.
All right, with no other comments, let's move on to business items.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have Personnel Matters with Mr. Kirk Lade.
Mr. President, members of the Board and Dr. Swanson, I've prepared for you a Personnel Report containing items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve Personnel Matters as presented on items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comp? Go ahead.
Just in case anybody would get all up in arms, there's a new licensed hire with the same last name as our superintendent. There's absolutely no relation via blood marriage or otherwise.
Thank you. Veronica, please pull the Board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes?
Mr. Davidak?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valente?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Westminster Public Schools, Clock-Mashing Advanced Ed Accredited Organization, will be Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. The regular meeting will be held in the Lecture Hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted in the window of the main entrance of Westminster High School and on Board Docs 24 hours before each business meeting. Veronica, the time is now 7:13 PM, and we are adjourned.